I will open the meeting at 6:30. There's Jack. Okay, as long as I knew you were recording. I'll open the meeting at 6:30. First on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from April. Not the minutes. What did I do with the minutes?
February 16th.
March 30th.
March 16th and March 30th.
March 30th. Those are the ones we're supposed to do.
Yes.
So I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the March 30th meeting. The motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose say no. All right, thank you. All right, we have two transfer requests. We'll bring library up first. Yeah, I know, chief, you don't want to be rushed.
No, she's gonna be free and easy.
Do I just stand here? You're gonna stand here.
So the library has, and I will pass this around. The library has some work that needs to be done.
That's an understatement. Sorry.
And they've come before us today looking for $3,630 to... What was that? ITF?
It's for variable frequency.
Oh, we place the VFD. What is a VFD?
A VFD is a variable frequency drive. And it is, we have three air handlers in our HVAC system. And each one of those air handlers has a VFD in it. And it helps control the airflow, maximizes efficiency. Basically, the air handler really doesn't function properly without it. So this particular one is for the air handler. And each one controls certain areas of the building. We discovered this one was dead when the children's room was freezing cold. So our HVAC company came out and discovered that the VFD drive was gone on it. It's been on order. And it's supposed to be coming in at the end of April and installed at the end of April. We also had, we lost another VFD drive from the power surge that happened. I don't know if you guys were aware of that. But that's an insurance claim. Which is good because that one's more expensive.
It is. Each one probably, or each area has a...
Different motors, so different sized motors. And this one is a seven and a half horsepower motor. And the one that was, this power surge was a 50 horsepower.
A VFD is pretty much a dimmer switch for a big motor.
That's a good one.
Exactly, it's the same concept.
So their request is for $3,630. We have $120,000 in our reserve fund transfer account. So we've got nothing. Any questions?
Says the quote is good for 30 days.
They're fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, we've been with them forever. And we, I've been back. And actually, it was supposed to have shipped on March 31st. And because of supply chain and all these other issues, it got delayed by a few weeks. But actually, both of the VFDs are supposed to come at the same time now. So hopefully, we'll save on a service call. And we'll come at the same time.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. We approve the EDP verse fund transfer request from the library for $3,630. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Being done, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose say no. As a vote, I vote yes. So we sign down at the bottom, ready?
Yes.
See, small amounts are easy.
That's why I was glad I went first.
Thank you very much, everyone.
By the way, I did attend. My granddaughter is now old enough to go to playtime. So I did my first playtime about three weeks ago. It was a riot.
I'm glad.
I had a good time.
Yeah, they, yeah, we had to go over to a new system because we were getting so inundated. It was too crowded in that room we were seating.
Don't tell me.
But it's a good problem to have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, we had a lot of fun.
Okay, great. Thanks.
You gonna sit there, chief, or you wanna sit at the big boy table?
Sure.
So we have a request from the fire department for a reserve fund transfer. The amount on this piece of paper says $70,000. We now have $117,000.
No, 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 $70,000 is overlooked for, this is just background information that I'm giving you.
No, 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 I'm reading off your request. I'm sorry, I'm just letting everybody know what the transfer is. Now, I'm gonna give you a chance to justify that exorbitant number that you put on this piece of paper. It's $70,000 going into the, this is to pay for contractual obligations for unforeseen overtime expenses. So that's the, that's the request from the chief. So if you now want to go through your sheet here.
Sure. So right now, where we stand as of last week's payroll, we are $35,000 in the red, in the overtime expenditures. This is due to, in the last, over the last year, starting even before this fiscal year, we've had three people who've been out injured. One was out for over a year. He got, he came off the books in November. I have another one go on June of last year. She's still on books. She probably won't be back until next fiscal year. And then recently, in January, February, we have an individual go out with a devastating skiing injury while he was on vacation. He shattered his pelvis. He's out until at least September, in October of his next fiscal year. So in tracking those, just those three injuries since the beginning of the fiscal year, I've incurred 125 shifts of overtime just to fill those funds. We've also had three members go through the Mass Fire Academy. It's a 10, 11 week program. That they're reassigned to the Mass Fire Academy. They go there 40 hours a week for 11 weeks. We currently have two in there right now. They're due back in May. Those shifts total, 62 shifts in overtime. And then with the COVID thing, not significant, but awfully as a factor, we had six positive tests throughout it. And this year alone, and even with quarantine restrictions and stuff, we had 29 shifts of overtime. So total number of hours, 216 shifts is almost 2,600 hours in overtime just to cover those individuals. That does not include, my God. Just in personal time, vacation time, and training time, that's an additional 5,000 hours. And that's just for everybody to take their vacation personally. And their 48 hours of training time, that there are a lot of, all of which because of these absences that we previously discussed, incur overtime.
So you say you're $35,000 over budget. Now, just for a procedural question, so I understand, I didn't think anybody was allowed to overspend a budget line item? How is it that...
He can because it's not his total budget. So as long as his bottom dollar's still in the green.
The percentage of the salary account?
Just this particular overtime line is negative, but his total salary budget isn't over. So he's, technically, I can move money around and cover, so he'd be okay.
I made, Ashley and I can be abundantly aware, probably in December or...
That this was gonna happen?
This was gonna happen. My, my initial estimate was probably $100,000 over. I'm now at, what did I say? 96, 92?
Yeah.
My anticipation is it'll decrease slightly because I get those two individuals back in the middle of May. So I'll have a month and a half where hopefully, they run out of as much overtime. But I've got people that have taken overtime, vacation. So pretty much, I only allow one person off at a time. Without, you know, if somebody's sick, I can't, I can't cover. So pretty much every day, every shift, there's somebody off from now until June.
So if we didn't fund this, you would basically, maybe a month or two before the end of the fiscal year, run out of salary money? Is that the way I understand how this works?
Yeah, probably, probably at the end of May, yeah, he wouldn't have any left.
He wouldn't have any left, and so you'd have to tell him to stay home. Unless, again, I'm just trying to understand this logistical, how it works. So a $70,000 request, we've got 100, and like I said, 117,000 left in the reserve. This will give us, it's just shy of 47,000 for the rest of the fiscal year. That's my only worry is cutting it real close for us.
I don't disagree with you at all.
And I'm making an assumption that you and the chief have exhausted every other spare dollar that they have in their budget that they can move.
We'll have a better idea in our wages line item where we stand as we get into May, beginning June. I anticipate that there may be, and I use this very cautiously, 10,000 to 15,000 left on some of the other pockets.
So he assumes he'll still be over in overtime? So what we do is we make them spend what the cost is in that set, in that line. So if it's vacation, spend in your vacation line. If it's overtime, spend in that line. And then we can just move money around in his budget in May and June. So that's, so he's playing to still be over in overtime. So we're gonna have to work and move money around if he has it to move around at the end of the year.
So our question is, are we comfortable, okay, with this high a number, right? With what is gonna be left as you get us by the last two and a half months, right? But in essence, there's no real way around it, right? I mean, you can't not pay your guys. That's, that's the issue.
No fires for May.
Knock on wood real quick.
But his problem is it's all contractual, so somebody called, it's automatically overtime. He doesn't have a choice, yeah.
Anybody get any, anything they want to add to this?
Can I ask a clarifying question on academy training? So is that, is that mandated? Because it's obviously separate from your, does not include training?
Yes, that is a mandated, contractually, each member of the department must go through the Mass Fire Academy in order to be employed there.
So next fiscal year, you have that accounted for, I hope?
Next, next fiscal year, I have, right now, I have one individual who's scheduled. And if I have five back on every group, I don't have that problem.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Is there any hint of any other department having an issue coming up? At least, I know recreation is close.
She should be fine because she, she has...
That was a big number.
Yeah, she has stipend money she will, I spent that with her the other day, so she should be okay. I haven't heard...
I mean, it was more, we're talking utilities and legal expenses, the only other two that we have.
Right, which I think we're covering legal at town meeting. And then utility, we think we might be able to move around. And then we're covering, because there was a little bit in gas. But those are just...
Because, I mean, we can handle another library kind of request, $3,500 for that number. But if we get another one of these...
Yeah, I haven't heard anything. And everyone, I ran numbers, everyone else looks good. I mean, no one else is in the hole, really. I know that we have, we're expecting utilities, council, and municipal gas and diesel to come in. But pending, we're hoping to have mine to move around. She'll be fine.
Okay. But you're thinking that 70 is actually not gonna cover it?
Not gonna be enough.
So he's gonna have to, hopefully, yeah, within his budget.
And the other thing, speaking to the question about next fiscal year, we actually, I actually looked at the overtime budget over the last eight years. And unfortunately, the last two years have been the lowest it's been since 2014. So I made significant increases in next fiscal year's budget to...
Yeah, I think you're at 180.
180 in June, December. And it's a true reflection, somewhat true at least.
Yeah, I think normally, you're only at, you were at 120 before, right? Or was it 110?
No. This year was 148.
For budget?
Last year was 135. We had a high of 268,000 back in 2018. I have no idea where that went.
Yeah, so he usually is budgeted 150. We bumped it to 180 for '23.
For '23. As long as we don't have another COVID type issue or to keep the guys off the ski slopes.
Yeah. The injuries, the injuries clearly played a part.
If there's no other discussions, no other questions of the chief, I'll entertain a motion to approve the advisory transfer request as submitted by the, by department for $70,000. So, motion and a second and a second. Any further discussion? All right, being done, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Say yes. Oppose say no. As a vote. What I would recommend that you do is also on this form, there's a thing called an advisory, right? Which is not an ask for money, but it's put us on notice that you may need some more money in the future. I would fill out one of those and submit it so that if you think you're going to need another 20 between now and the end of the year, at least that tells us, okay? Hey, after 47 we got, we kind of know we're gonna get a request.
Yep.
I would suggest that. All right, and I'm assuming you'll fill in all the rest of this?
Yeah, yeah.
Chief, while you're talking, everyone, just talk about maybe the impact would be if you went from the five a shift to the six a shift. Future budget care.
Sure. So currently, you know, we're, we're staffed at five a shift. And we can drop to four without incurring any overtime. The four people out. Every time somebody's out. But at six, my, my goal would be to be staffed at six, down to a minimum of four. So at that point, we'd be able to have two people out without incurring overtime. I guess what is potential savings for the town would be sufficient.
Save every dollar you can, because there aren't too many dollars left.
As, as someone who spent 10 years in the banking industry, believe me, I...
You know how it works.
It pains me to come before you to tell you this, but I couldn't do anything about it.
Now, the fact of it is contractual was the real sticking.
The rough, rough layer.
Now, if you had come in and said, geez, you know, I don't like that old Ford Explorer, I want a new Ford Explorer. But then we'd have had a different kind of conversation.
I hope I have no problem with my Ford. It's a Chevy, that's why.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right, to wrap up our business, there's only two items we had on our agenda we had to discuss.
So I think, again, I'm here tonight to talk around the warrant. We all have copies of it. Again, just speaking for me for now, I think, as warrants go, I think it's pretty innocuous. I think there's gonna be a couple of discussion items, if not tonight, in the future. And one is obviously the line item budget. But Andrew and Ashley, who are obviously members of FOMC and voice selectmen, have done our best to present what we consider to be a reasonable improvement budget that keeps us within two and a half, but gives everyone as much as we can. Even though some things we had to cut. But at the same time, I think it's a very fundamentally sound budget that does not incur a lot of pain to the taxpayer. There's one item not on the warrant that we had a discussion with the council on aging last night. So, long story short, the warrant is currently still open. The board of selection last night, by majority vote, said to remove the article for sponsorship by the board of selectmen on the purchase of Charlton furniture for the council on aging, i.e. senior center. However, based upon a certain amount of compromise and willingness to be fair to voters, we kept the warrant open and gave the council on aging some time to come up with their own proposal around purchasing it. That would not be sponsored by the board of selectmen. And, you know, obviously, we would make a recommendation if it comes back in. I know they worked with Andrew and Midbomb Council starting today. So that may come in, but that will come in.
How much longer built it, they have?
So we said not, no further than our meeting on April 26th. But we have to confer legal, make sure that that's the right date. If it has to get pulled in, we warned them that it might have to get pulled in. Former selectman Cooper is actually spearheading for the group. And we let her know that if that date does have to get pulled in, we're gonna line up. So that's kind of where we stand. So that's an open item that we'd have to discuss. But currently, right now, there is nothing on the warrant for that. But in a, in a, again, the best word I can use is, is a good faith effort and compromise. Again, the majority said, we're not gonna sponsor this. But if you can come in with a citizen's petition, obviously, we'll put it on. But there's no guarantee, in fact. You know, I was pretty clear last night that I'd support it. But they could at least get it on the warrant. So that's why that's not here. But it will, it, it could be brought up to us. But outside of that, honestly, this warrant, congratulations, buddy, because this one's pretty tight. It's, and at least from our side, again, I defer to the rest of the members on my board, this is a really good budget. And a really good warrant overall. So that's my spiel.
And I, I think you were at our meeting where we voted, they gave us the options. How would we like to do this? And you chose option three for the...
Yep.
Okay, that was, Andrew tried to put $200,000 in stabilization, but we took it out because the school department came in and said, hey, we need another three, okay? So we are not putting in money in stabilization, which was out of the ordinary. I mean, typically, we do that in October, okay? But we all thought, we wanted to save a few of those positions. I particularly, I feel bad for these people that have to come in year after year saying, I need another six hours. I need another eight hours. I need, okay? We all know they work hard. At least I, from what I observed, they work hard. So that's the way we went with the budget. And the only thing that was added in the operating budget that we typically do in the fall is the $250,000 whole pivot.
Yeah, we try to leave it in there. I think we had cut it last year because we didn't have the funding for it. So that's why we did it in the fall. We try to leave that in there.
In the operating side versus out of the free cash.
Correct, yeah.
The only other thing I'd mention, especially for those at home, that, again, as a reminder right now, the school committee and administration's coming in at 4.03. But that is...
It was like a 7.8.
Yeah, yeah, so it's a 7.8. So what that really means is that both Dudley and Charlton respectively have to agree on that number. If Dudley says no and goes to a lower number, and again, I invite Andrew and Ashley to correct me, is that basically what could happen, let's say that's lowered, again, making up, not saying it's gonna happen, but let's say that gets lowered to 323 or something around three. That extra money that would have been voted on at town meeting in May could potentially, or would be moved out to stabilization and/or something else in the October town meeting. So I think the big issue again for those at home is that no one's asking on our side of the house because we've done a good job from our financial management side. We're not asking for debt exclusion, we're not asking for an override at all right now. We can cover everything under the operating budget inclusive of the 4.03. But we also have those two police officers. And again, I know you were at the meeting and you were also supportive of that, so thank you. But if that number comes down from the school committee, that in a sense becomes extra funds from that line item. By its very nature, would have to be moved somewhere else, which could goes back to stabilization.
Yeah, we can only, our town meeting is before Dudley, so that we gapped her, so we'd have to move it either on October or May.
Exactly.
But the school committee, obviously, because we're bound by contract, they can't. Even though we vote a higher number, we're still bound by Dudley.
So that's the only thing that could throw a little wrench into it. But at the end of the day, that would only help us. But it's, but nothing is going to hurt us unless somehow they, actually, you know what? They can't raise it above 4.03 at this point. So, so the operating budget is not going to, we don't need, we do not need override, we do not need a debt exclusion as of right now for any asks.
And also inclusive of this operating budget, every position in town is up to the pay scale that they should be, right? We don't, we don't have any hanging out there, hey, you know, we've gotta bring these guys up to meet this. That's all done.
Yeah, I think we're done with that now.
Yeah, clerical union's been pulled into the non, into the non-月pay scale. It's at the rate that they should be, so there's no more big adjustments.
Yeah, we voted in the DPW contract last, well, last night for their, for their one year. So that, so...
It actually affects this, this fiscal year, but we still...
Right. So, yeah, because they'll be out of contract for '23.
Yep.
So they're, none of that's reflected in here.
So it sounds like we have a good baseline budget to start with for the future, okay? We've taken care of all the past issues and we've gotten rid of all of that.
Exactly. And again, I can't, you know, say thank you enough to obviously FOMC, but Ashley and Andrew and the board of selectmen, my colleagues, because to your point, we've been cleaning up, I don't wanna call them messes, but we have been dealing with past issues that, to your point, are now resolved.
Good.
So I said, they should go pretty quick.
I do have one item I do want to bring up. But no, it's just to put in everybody's head for October, okay? Take a good look at the capital budget requests, right? Somewhere in the neighborhood of what, $2 million, non-large item, and $4 million for everything, okay? And free cash has been what, 1.3, 1.4?
Yeah, we still have that 10% rule to put into...
Right, and now we just took it out of the operating budget for stabilization. So now we can put that back in. And that's not part of the numbers that I just quoted, okay?
I just got two new requests yesterday from the library director, too, for more capital. They got $12,880 projects.
No, I think, I think we are very much on the same page there. I think we almost need as a group to literally force rank everything, to say, what is most important dollars? I know we had a lot of discussion last night around, you know, personal preferences. Again, informally for the board of selectmen with the fire station, it seemed general consensus that was at the very top. So when we think around additional revenue that we don't have yet, i.e. Amazon or any LNG, regardless of what it is, we're gonna have to have a real conversation real quick around where do we force rank everything? And what are we willing to go to bat for? Because even a rough estimate between, again, Shepherd Hill feasibility study, CMS roof, and the list goes on and on, PSP, fire station improvement, you're probably talking 40 to 50 million dollars. So we have to figure out exactly how we're gonna spend it, right?
So my kind of like preliminary capital budget that we've started, at least right now, I have about 1.2 million that are, that's free, that's free cash. You know, dedicated funding. Everything else in there is either chapter 90, debt excluded, ambulance reserve receipts, or part of the community partnership lending to Amazon.
Yeah, and I bring it up, not, not we're gonna solve anything tonight, but you gotta start thinking about it now, okay? So come September, we're not all sitting here saying, we're gonna come up with that capacity in dollars?
Because we have that feasibility coming in as of September 1st study that the school committees will be asking for, from, from the MSBA. And I know it's partially reimbursable, but Ashley, I don't know if that comes in upfront or the back or...
I'm gonna assume it's gonna have to come in upfront and be the same thing like we did for the public seat.
Yeah.
But I, that's gonna be happening, I don't know.
Yeah, because I think that kicks off...
I haven't heard anything from the schools.
My understanding from a very prelimin, from my prior life, was that, again, that process kicks off September 1st. And from September 1st, we as a town have 270 days to agree to funding. So it's a feasibility study, first step. If that passes, then it's all right, you have 270 days to say, yep, we are gonna push forward with this. So Andrew, mind?
Is the goal still to do October and then the November election? Or do you think we're not gonna have numbers by then?
I think we should just, we're gonna have to wait to see what the school's timeline looks like. It's like they, they time it out as a very preliminary point that we're at now. So it may have to be until next year. They're supposed to be coming in a, a meeting pretty soon, right, he's outlined, what their plan is for debt, for debt on the roof. And we'll have a better sense of that. And at that point, hopefully, they'll give us some timeline as far as major benchmarks.
And again, I only bring that up because that is the elephant in the room of that it was, I would say it was an unknown because I think we all knew they were applying every single year.
No.
I think it was a surprise that they actually got it this year. Although it was deserved. I think it was, I think it was a surprise to many of us. So that's just another curve ball to say, all right, now, we gotta figure this one out, too. And so does Dudley. Absolutely, yeah. Now, as far as, so the CMS roof is on, is gonna be on...
Now, as far as, so the CMS roof is on, it's gonna be all brought up in the fall?
Yes, yes, I think our preliminary plan on that is that we would look for the loan up, the appropriate vote, and we would have to take it in the fall along with all my other cap, the other capital. If a debt exclusion was needed, which I think is the direction that Dudley may go, because they also have a roof that's gonna be done, they'd be looking at the November ballot to get that, for that on, but, okay. Not a track that we can recommend, not knowing what their debt's gonna be.
Yeah, I've asked it for them, but I haven't seen anything yet.
Whereas at least the current chairperson for the other three weeks is adamantly opposed to any debt exclusion for that. I want it funded from the operating budget. So we will see how that plays out, but yeah, we'll see how that works. I say operating budget, basically anything within the level.
Yeah, Andrew and I were talking about it earlier, we're not sure. I think, I'm assuming the schools are gonna go out for it, so we would just be responsible for our portion, but we don't...
It's how, how are they structuring debt, if they're, if they're combining both projects together from both towns? And how is that, how is the interest gonna be reallocated back out into the towns if it's, if they go up for a combined debt service? And then if we use any alternative funding sources like ARBO, which has a deadline of when we can, you know, actually spend it, how would we kind of make the mechanics of that work if, like, let's say we took $2 million of ARBO to cut half that, half of our costs, and essentially, long-term borrowed the rest? So we gotta kind of work those mechanics out.
So it's a really nice way of saying all eyes are on the school committee for the next six months, give or take, so we can see their point. Yeah, exactly.
All right, you wanna go over the wiring?
Yes, sir. So, Mr. Chairman, I don't know how you'd like to feel about this, but the first, first article we never deal with, because that's our election, we don't have to, we don't have to make a motion on that, but 2, 3, 2, 3, and 4, we're actually either bypassing or we don't have anything to talk about, so if it, if FinCom is all as well as the Board of Selectmen, it'd be great if we could just, if it's okay to motion all, all of those three at once. So for the Board of Selectmen, I, I motion to, basically, make the recommendation that pass over or not deal with it, if we don't have to. 2, 3, 4, or a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here we go, all those in favor? All right, opposed, that's unanimous. Mr. Clancy will be...
All right, I'll, I'll entertain the same motion in the Finance Committee.
Second.
All right, motion and second, all those in favor to say yes?
Yes.
All those who say no?
Thank you, Mr. Clancy. So Article 5, I think, and again, I invite Andrew and Ashley to correct me, I'm trying to drive this forward because I kept Andrew late last night at our meeting. So the interdepartmental transfers, again, these are pretty standard, moving from, for those especially at home, from existing accounts over to bills that we need to pay. So, you know, $20,000 from environmental to special counsel, and then two for free cash, one for $12,000 going over to the increased cost of fuel for gas and diesel, and also $200,000 from free cash to snow and ice. Again, as a reminder to those at home, free cash is for all intents and purposes the one or basically only account that we can deficit spend, and that's done for a reason, because we don't know year to year.
Not free cash, that's snow and ice.
Oh, I'm sorry, snow and ice, yes, that's, that's snow and ice is the only one that we can deficit spend, and then every year, we just move money from free cash, because we have no idea what the winters are gonna be. And I think it was at year beginning, it was brought up that, there wasn't a lot of snow this year, but there was a ton of ice, and that's a lot more expensive.
Salt kills it.
Yeah, so, yeah, salt, salt kills it. So that's, so, so we're moving that $200,000 from, or made the recommendation from free cash to pay for the bills that we, that we have.
And actually, if we didn't have free cash left, you are allowed to raise and appropriate that on the next year's budget.
You are.
Yes, that's the, there's only so many accounts you're allowed to do that with, and snow and ice is one of them. But we have free cash left, so...
So for those at home, we never cut corners on snow and ice. I mean, it, it, it's not a budget issue, it's just a, it's just an accounting issue about how, how we move money that's actually paid for.
And what was the rule we gotta budget, because...
As long as you budget the same, or you budget it the year before, you're allowed to deficit spend. If you go down, you can't, but if you go up, you'd have to keep spending that, you'd have to keep...
Which is another reason why we always overspend, because we don't wanna put too much in there.
Exactly.
Right, we can never go back now.
Right.
All those strange, all those rules, I mean, like Ashley knows that, go.
Yep.
All right, you wanna make your...
Yes, so I would, if you have a motion. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion of the Board of Selectmen. Here we go, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. Mr. Clancy.
I'll entertain a motion, same, same motion. We recommend Article 4, Article 5. Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor to say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no. That is unanimous.
Now, for our favorite, the town budget, we've talked about this an awful lot. Basically, what we're looking at is the recommendation from FinCom, it's $34,000 and $886,478. Again, I commend FinCom on that, I think it's a very solid number, and I would recommend that to everyone, and I think, unless there are individual line items that you'd like to go over, I think this is a pretty healthy approach. And I should say, this is actually only slightly above, maybe slightly above fiscal year '22 by what, around $2 million when all said and done? Which, which sounds like a lot, but...
Well, from FY '22, it's only like a million over, a million, a little bit more.
Yeah, because, because the voted budget '02 was...
Was 33.
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, well, I have 30, I have 32, 39, 1.
Oh, it didn't include the revised one?
Oh, I have the revised one, yeah.
Oh, you have the revised one, sorry.
Yes, because we did the million at town meeting in October.
Gotcha, okay, so that's not inclusive, I'm, I'm, okay, that's fine, that's cool.
So this one would be 33, 8.
All right, all right, so basically, we're going from 33, 8 to 34.
Yeah, it's like, I think, a 2 point, was it 2.09 or 2.? Yeah, 2.9, it was like 2.7.
So definitely what I consider to be a normalized increase when you take everything into it. Any questions from the board on any, on, in, in the individual line items I know that were, you know, someone's gonna look at this for the first time?
This came up last night, where is the, um... The, the Activities Council? What line of is that on? It's not under Recreation?
No, they're self-funded.
Yeah, they're special revenue fund, I think it's just all donations.
So any, any of their revenues go back into pay for utilities? The town's obligation is major capital, it's major capital.
And there's not even a line item anymore, could it fund?
No, no, because major capital, we pay out of our capital, through the budget, more, so it's...
I'm looking into that, make sure I get all the different stuff, make sure that things are...
Additional, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm just saying, we're working on that, so...
Additional questions, can I say? Here we go, so that number would be the 3, 4, Ashley, correct me, and Andrew, 3, 4, 8, 8, 6, 4, 7, 8?
Yep.
Any motion?
Motion.
Okay, pass it, go second.
Second.
Second, David, any further discussion, Mark said. Here we go, all those in favor? All right, opposed, that is unanimous. Mr. Clancy.
Okay, I will entertain the same motion in the Finance Committee. Same motion, and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor to say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no. That is unanimous.
All right, we talked about our Water Department, our Water Department budget, the Enterprise Fund, again, consistent, it's, it's, for those at home, that is a, in a sense, a different enterprise, or it is a separate enterprise fund that ultimately that we have to move money from. You know, they're asking for, you know, some changes here and there for like increases, not, it seems to be not a lot.
They don't have much in there.
Yeah.
It's almost, yeah, a sewer, unless they have any capital that they're doing, but they're not this year.
So again, this one seems, it's pretty straightforward in looking at the numbers. And again, you'll see the actual motion, so it's basically the 94, 5,000. You'll see that on the motion on that, on Page 3. I have a motion from David to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
No, I can pass it, any further discussion, no questions. Here we go, all those in favor? All right, opposed, that's unanimous.
And motion to recommend Article 7 as presented?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Here we go, all those in favor to say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no. That is unanimous.
Andrew, real quick, do you wanna talk about the changes we wanna make to the, for the booklet? Because sewer and water are done, but not the main budget.
Okay. Yeah, so one thing that we were gonna do a little bit differently this year is that the format that actually goes in the budget isn't going to be necessarily like the specific line items, because as you, as you can see, it's like as you're looking at the administrative lines, they're detailed, and then maybe, and then when you get over to that public safety, public works, it goes to just generally salaries and then expenditures. For consistency, we're looking to just basically follow that format through an entire thing, just salaries and expenditures. We're gonna publicize all the ClearGov stuff after it's approved by Finance, and we can get it out there in public, so anybody can look at it in advance and have that available that people could look up. But in terms of the budget that people are looking at, rather than looking line by line, those are just people looking at salaries and expenditures per department.
And it will save on paper.
Save on paper.
Minimize the...
And I think some of the things that we've talked about, it's like a lot, sometimes discussion may come up on a, on a specific person or specific line, especially on the administrative side, but when you get to, get to public works and the, the large departments, they're all crunched together, so it becomes less, I wouldn't say, less, I wouldn't say less debate, but...
No, and I...
It's just, it's not consistent.
So long as it's, it's well-publicized before, hey, this is the format, and if you want to know detail, go...
Here's where you can find it.
Here's where you find it, yeah, exactly.
And we'll be posting, posting the detail, right?
Yeah, so I'm gonna be doing that right in the, right in the ClearGov format, we're probably gonna put these out, out two as, as a backup, just to make it widely known beforehand, but when you're sitting in the meeting, it will be more of a condensed version.
And the ClearGov software that we're using will print the booklet, so it will print the budget for us next year. Like I hand typed all of this in this year. So next year, next year, we'll print it. I hope not.
Okay. I just don't wanna see Portnoy know and get a question on, so how much is that SAG-AWAT?
I am concerned about transparency, that's all.
Absolutely. We wanna make sure we get that information out ahead of time and stuff, and, you know, it's a consistency on transparency, too, because some things are more condensed, and other things are open.
Yeah, so if someone wanted, they can, they can ask, I can give, yeah, I'll still have it all, it just, it condenses it up for the...
175 copies, that's...
Right, right. Yeah, and it's 471 lines, so this is like, I think, eight pages, so it's eight pages times 400 booklets.
And that's printed in microscopic font.
Yeah, this is small.
So the rest of us can read it, okay?
I think it actually helps people, I think when there's too much information from, I mean, I'm, I'm often, you know, I'm all for transparency, I think all that, you know, when, yeah, but sometimes it gets too confused, when there's too much information, it's overwhelming, and I think it's easier when, you know, with a little less information sometimes, it's easier to pick.
Yeah.
Good, good point, Chris.
So the water and sewer budgets are like that in the booklet, because this we just PDF in, but those ones are formatted in there, so those ones are...
Right, so that's what it's gonna look like, just like you've...
Right, yes, it'll be total salaries, total expenditures for every department.
Hey, I'm sorry, did you guys vote? I don't remember.
Yes.
We voted on 7, I think.
7, yes, 8.
8, I'm sorry, my bad. So we're talking sewer, again, very, in a sense, similar procedure to what we do for water. The big delta there is around sewer expenses, it goes up about $150,000, but there are very good reasons for that after, you know, listening to Superintendent Boria talk to FinCom about that, Ashley, correct me, but assuming that that 1, 3, 0, 5, 100 for fiscal year '22 is exact, we're going up to 1, 4, 6, 8?
Correct. So actually, he did amend his budget in November from the 1, 3, 0, 5, I think he added $100,000 at town meeting. That's just not inclusive, but he did increase his budget by $100,000 because of the Veolia contract.
Oh, okay, oh, that's right, yeah, okay. So basically, we're going from around 1...
So he would, he would amend it 1.4, 0, 5 to 1.4, 6, 8, so...
So I think it's important people know, too, again, at home more than anything, is that what we voted in May sometimes gets modified throughout the year. So what was voted in May to now, it's about $150,000, but what was then amended is only really an additional $50,000. And again, I think, you know, based upon his presentation to FinCom, it's actually for very good reason. Questions from our board? Here we go, motion? David?
Second.
I'm gonna give Steve that one. Any discussion? Here we go, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous.
Motion to approve Article 8 as presented? Do all of a second, all right. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Here we go, all those in favor to say yes? Opposed, say no. That is unanimous.
Some good news, we have some capital items under Article 9. I should say we haven't, we don't have anything under, under 9 that we have to talk through, so we're just gonna pass that over, and the same is true of 10. So I'd ask our board if they take those as a group as well. Any motion? David? Thank you, pass it. Any discussion? Here we go, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous.
Motion to pass over Articles 9 and 10? Motion and a second?
Now you're part of the club.
Any discussion? Here we go, all those in favor to say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no. That is unanimous.
And again, Article 11 is one of our standard articles, much like, quite honestly, these all are, as we, as we go through. Cemetery Perpetual Care, this is basically just saying that they're gonna take in that 16, 6, including me, who actually bought Polositio, to, maybe, basically to move it in, so, again, a pretty small number as usual. Discussion? Here we go, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous.
Motion to recommend Article 11 as presented? Motion, second, second. Any discussion? All those in favor to say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no. That is unanimous.
Next up, our revolving funds, I think we have a good, a good number of them, without being too onerous for people. Ashley and Andrew, only question I have is, did we change any of the numbers this year?
We didn't change the numbers, we added a new one.
Okay, which one?
Stormwater, the very last one. So we're gonna take any fees that they collect from the stormwater that they're doing? And then it would go into a fund to pay for third-party, like a peer review.
Like a what?
It's like a peer review, so they can go in, so it's like a big project like Amazon, so they can go out and do all the stormwater.
So as of today, there's zero in that...
It's not, it's not created again, correct, so...
This would create a...
This would create a start for... We'd budget for stormwater right now, this would essentially take the permit fee, put it into a revolving fund, and they'd pull from the revolving fund, take the stormwater.
Correct. So the stormwater fee is new from, well, there wasn't much of a stormwater fee prior to July 1st, so she just started charging that July 1st. It's always been there, but we haven't hit a big enough project to trigger one. So this would help pay for any third-party or any stormwater maintenance that we would have to do. Remember how they were talking about all the big projects coming up?
Right.
So that would help pay for that.
Yeah, so, you know, my, my first observation is, you know, everybody else is $20,000, $50,000, $20,000, why is it $75,000?
To try to keep as much in there to pay for some of the stormwater maintenance, so it's less obligation on the general fund.
Do they have that kind of cash flow need?
Depending on the size of the project.
Right.
Because of Amazon.
Like, I think Amazon was almost like a $10,000 permit fee that went to the general fund right now. So in a sense, that would, that's not anything that we budget for revenue, because it's new, so that in a sense would stay in here, and then they could use it either to do a third-party consultant on it, or...
Right, but the third-party consultant is that expensive, $75,000.
They could also use it for any, any of the maintenance that they have, so we're in, I think, year six starting for July, so six through 10, it's gonna be a lot of doing the actions of the stuff that they found in the plans from 1 through 5.
And I'm sorry, but if everybody else can get by with 10 or 15 or 20...
Yeah, I mean, we can change it, that's just what they had asked, that's what they had asked for.
Can I ask a question? So the planning board automatically adds the peer review fee, like, as part of, if you bring a plan in, you're automatically paying the engineer to renew those plans, so does conservation not do that? Do they not automatically say, if you're gonna bring a big project in as part of Charlton, you're gonna have to pay for the peer review to review your plans?
She does do it for, we were doing it in the absence of an agent, to everybody, because we didn't have an agent. And then now, most of them she can do, so they are charging on some of the larger, larger projects.
So they, so they...
So she is doing some of them, yes, yeah.
Because it doesn't make any sense for, you know, for us to kind of put that bill.
This was more for if it, if we needed it for third-party or any stormwater maintenance, so whether they had to do, um, any fixing of anything or any of the reports that we have to do, I forgot what else, there was one more that she said. But, yeah, any of the MS4 stuff, right, right.
When, when you say fixing, you think that's like DPW going out there to clean out it?
So I don't know, I think it's too big for DPW, so in years one through five, they created a report every year of any of the MS4, I don't wanna call them violations, but any of the MS4 things that they, yeah, requirements that we have to fix. So in years six through 10, we have to fix them.
And then six through 10, we have, we have to have a capital plan of, I think it was one project per year that needs to be accomplished to reduce your, you know, to, to further meet your MS4 requirement.
Right.
This is town-owned land that we have to do our work on, this isn't, this isn't other people's.
Some of it, I think, is pri, no, I think some of it is privately-owned roads that we have to do maintenance on, but most of it's all town, yeah. So I think some of it is...
Town obligation to get them.
Right, right, because some of them could be like a cut-through road for, I don't know, maybe like a trash truck to get through or something, but some of them are, aren't technically town-owned, but they're town-maintained, so like the DPW applies them and everything, from what I understand.
Yes, basically, the stormwater runoff mitigation.
Right.
Pardon me for not knowing the answer to this one, but at what time of the year is unencumbered funds transferred to the general fund?
After June 30th.
After June 30th, so the money you sit there and sit there and sits there throughout the course of the year, that they collected, right? And then on that one day, well, it, it becomes general fund money?
And even that's over whatever the threshold would be here, yes, yep.
Which brings up the interesting question to Mr. Clancy's point of, currently, it says 75. Is there any interest in lowering that to, and I'm making up a number, like 50, 40, 25?
Right. Yeah, that's just what they had asked, so they asked us to say, yeah.
Well, seeing as this is a brand-new fund, I would like to recommend that we say, all right, 25, right? Because to me, that's $50,000, okay, that we don't get at the end of the year, we may want somewhere else.
Right.
I'm sorry, but, you know, not trying to short them, make your life easier, but if everybody else can seem to survive at the 20, 15, 20, why 75?
The highest one in here is 20, so, I mean, I.
There's no, there's no objection from us to.
Yeah. I was just asked to put it on there, so.
Maybe 25, because I do know we have some big projects coming, okay? We've got the Amazon and some of these others. So we can always adjust it next year if we find that they, they don't hit it.
Yeah, I was just about to say, I mean, knowing it's, it's brand-new from this perspective, we could start with 25 and just, and just monitor. And if we see the number is, you know, outrageous, we can always adjust it next year to 50 or 40, you know, some, some other number that's reasonable.
And I'm sure they asked for 75 because they didn't know what everybody else does, and hey, that's a great number, you know, everybody wants to go for the high number. So I don't know, how do we change, do we just scratch it out?
Yes, just change it right now.
Yeah, I can change it.
So, question for the Board of Selectmen is, would you recommend changing that number to 25? And would you want to make a motion, or some other number, or keep it at 75?
I'll make the motion, David. We'll make it 25.
All right, do I have a second? I'm gonna give it to Patsy. Steve, did you have any other questions?
Nope.
No, you're good?
Nope.
All right, further discussion on, on this one? Here we go, all's in favor?
I oppose that is unanimous at 25.
So I'll entertain a motion that of the stormwater revolving fund, the unencumbered balance starts at $25,000, or however you word it. So I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor say yes, opposed say no, that is unanimous.
Very good, Sharon. Actually, Andrew, the only question I have, just on this in general, is, at what point do we have too many revolving funds? I mean, is this a good number for you all? I mean, I just don't want to get too many.
Right.
And have it get unwieldy. And we don't necessarily need an answer tonight, but I just want to make sure that you're comfortable, the both of you, with, with this number of accounts.
There's only somebody by law that we can do, so.
And besides, Bill, with the new accounting system that Andrew would.
I was gonna say, that's fantastic.
This is easy peasy for them now.
I, I would just ask you both of you that if, that if you get more requests, feel free to push back and say, yeah, there's probably better ways to do it, so, if it, if it makes sense.
It would probably come up if there's another funding source that becomes available for a specific reason.
I don't, I think everyone else charges, like, unless there's any other, I mean, unless we have something new that comes in, we can't think of anything.
It has to be a specific, it would have to be a specific revenue for specific ops.
Right.
Because I know that audits often look at that to say, so I think revolving accounts do really, and it sounds like our number's fine for now.
Yeah.
Again, I just want to make sure your lives are.
Just more journal entries, which is fine. It's fine. But now, mind you, they're only allowed to use what's specific in this booklet, so they're only allowed to use it for those specific purposes. So if it's not in there, they can't use it.
All right, so that actually takes care of all of our, what I affectionately call our standard articles that we do every year. Now we go down to Article 13. This is actually, in a sense, a tax cut, for those at home. Uh, this is sponsored actually by the Board of Assessors. Basically, what it's doing is it's, and Ashley, correct me, and Andrew, is that we're gonna adopt part of the provisions of a master general law that establishes a $1,000 threshold for personal property. So if you have something going on at your house, et cetera, we're not gonna send the assessors out to say, hey, that's an $800 piece of equipment, you owe us 12 bucks. It costs way more money to have people send, to actually go out and do it, and this, I believe allows residents certain peace of mind, and it makes the assessor's life a little bit easier too. Anything else you want to add on?
No, that's, that's pretty much it. I mean, it's probably, costs us more postage and billing fees to recover the same amount of money.
Exactly.
And then we have no teeth in personal property either, so it's harder, so it's.
We can't go and take the property, the property, because they don't pay it back.
It's not like tax cut.
I guess you get to keep that flamethrower.
I was gonna say, this is a win-win for the town and, and the residents, because it just gives everyone peace of mind, and it, and it like limits the amount of like governmental oversight that we may have to do. So questions from our board?
No.
I have a motion, David, second. Well, Steve, be Patsy. Uh, discussion? Uh, here we go, as a favor? Pose? That is unanimous.
Motion to, to recommend approval of Article 13 as presented. So, motion, second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say yes, opposed say no, that is unanimous.
Next up is Article 14, is being asked by Chief Dowd and the Police Department. Basically, with the Police Reform Act, as well as a lot of other things going on, it's really what it's saying is that for special police officers, we want to raise the age to 70 years old. Uh, this would be a whole repetition that would need to be passed by the state legislature, and it's signed off by the governor. Oddly, in, again, my former life in a different town, the town of Milbury actually did this, and it actually helped them out. It, it, it really allows additional resources for Chief Dowd to use, especially with the amount of Route 20 construction that we all know is like gonna be occurring soon, as well as Amazon, as well as everything else that, that we go through the next few years. This just gives him more arrows in, in his quiver and more resources, without having to hire more police officers on full-time duty, or try to, or really try to coach for other.
What is a special police officer?
A designation, not, not a full-timer, more of an on-call person. But, uh, you know, you still have to meet the training and standards that are set for under posts, you still need to be an academy graduate, and that's why we're looking at raise the age to 70, because you're prying people that typically are police officers, are retired police officers. So if you can keep them longer than the mandatory retirement age of 65, then you'll essentially have five more years than they would at a regular patrolman.
But it sounds like you were putting them on restricted type duty.
Generally for traffic.
Okay, yeah, oh, yeah, it's, it, it's basically for, for details, is that a nice way?
That's, that's what I was wondering, okay, that, yeah. So once you're designated a special police officer, you cannot go back into a cruiser and start roaming around town?
Special police officers are still allowed to have these police powers, um, which is different than another thing that we're looking at, which would be basically traffic constables would not have police powers.
Yep.
So a special police officer could still patrol on a part-time basis.
Yeah. He can, he can be a, a regular shift.
As we all looked at Keith, like he was.
At the same, at the same time, you still have your union obligations that it kind of falls to write a first refusal within your unions, so then typically, those are kind of filled out, and then it's kind of the details maybe left over.
No, I just wondered if there's a liability, if all of a sudden I'm, I'm 68 and I become a special police officer, and then all of a sudden I, I take a shift because somebody didn't call in, and I just jump in the car and something happens. Is there a liability that, you know, hey, this guy really wasn't supposed to be doing this because he's over 65? That's the only question.
That more falls under the physical, where we, where we go under post, the physical training standard versus, because I think mandatory retirement age is more of a, is a retirement aspect to it.
I mean, I'm assuming whoever did this thought it all through, but I just don't know myself enough.
It's all based on the utilization, the planned utilization. Chances are, if you're in that gap, you're probably gonna just be doing this.
Yep. Okay. Do you have any issues with this? I mean, you are a resident expert on this stuff.
No, I don't have any issue with it. I mean, they're in good shape, wasn't it?
I was gonna say, I mean, they're, I mean, they're in bad shape to me.
Keeps it out of the doughnut shop.
Right? So many jokes.
One, one thing that we did, that we did do is we added an emergency preamble to this, so that way, once approved by the governor, it's automatically enforced versus the 90-day waiting period that's typically involved with special legislation.
But realistically, we also know that this is gonna take a while to actually get signed off.
Right.
Uh, questions from our board? I know this one's a little bit different.
No, I'm just kidding.
All right, uh, David, what? I'm, I'm gonna give that one to Patsy.
Second.
I got one, I got a second for Steve. Uh, any further discussion? Here we go, all's in favor?
Aye.
Pose, that's unanimous.
All right, motion to.
It's not financial, if you want to pass.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, it was a different one.
He said finance at the bottom.
It's just always in there. You can pass on it, though.
I like the term motion to pass on, I would support it. So, second. All those in favor to say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no, that is unanimous.
Uh, this one's also new, Article 15 by the ACO. Um, basically, it's, we're gonna start charging an adoption fee for animals at $20. It just, but this is one of those things, you actually have to adopt a bylaw to make it happen.
No, actually, no, sorry.
No, no, see, I was so close.
My, my thoughts on this, my thoughts on this are not to support, to eliminate the set fee and give the town entity the ability to arbitrarily set a fee, raise a fee, whatever they want, whenever they want, to whatever they want. I don't know why we would ever authorize any town entity to have that kind of power to just, whatever they feel like it, just change fees on our town, on, on the residents of Charleston, whatever they want.
So I believe that the, the thought was to establish the fee by policy versus by.
That's not the way it reads. The actual wording is, to change it to, the adoption fee for all unclaimed dogs or cats, regardless of sex, creed, or age, shall be established from time to time by the Charleston Animal Control Officer. Basically giving the ACO the ability to set it to whatever they want, whenever they want, back and forth from time to time. There will be no set fee. They can make the changes, raise it, lower it, increase it 10 times, twice.
What if we change the language? Because if it is by policy.
What do we say, by the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, I was gonna say, basically, by the ACO, by the ACO with approval of the Board of Selectmen, if that works to be. Just an idea.
And, but with that, there's no set amount, so I would like to see, at least if we're gonna have that, we should still maintain in there somewhere, you know, that the fee will be $20, uh, but maybe, uh, changed from time to time by the Animal Control Officer with approval of Board of Selectmen. Because you still have to have what the fee is.
So you basically are looking to have a baseline of 20, knowing that the ACO could come in front of the Board of Selectmen and, right after town meeting, if they were, and say, hey, can, can we bump this up to, you know, or can we lower it to zero? Or could we bump it up to 40?
Correct, because I think that, I'm not saying that an ACO is gonna say, oh, I want to be 100 bucks this month. I mean, not likely to happen, but that gives them that power.
I mean, they have justification, maybe food, maybe vet care, food, whatever, the costs go up to cover their, at least cover their costs, so they would come and have a reasonable reason for.
To the board.
Change, I guess.
I think that was.
Or, or is it written like that, is it written that way in case he gets overrun and wants to lower the fee to just animals?
So I kind of like David's idea of saying, again, we can figure out the language, but basically for all intents and purposes, that we adopt the language with the cop, with the amendment of, you know, it'll stay $20, but he or she, the ACO, can change it with Board of Selectmen approval, period.
I just think it's dangerous to have any, any entity, or wants to just change fees or make fees whenever they want.
Yeah, right, other, so David is out of?
Yes, sir.
So, 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 so much on the table is.
Phrase it however you need.
Basically, it's gonna be, uh, again, Ashley, or Andrew, I don't know who it is, but the adoption fee for all unclaimed dogs and cats, regardless of sex, creed, or age, shall be established from time to time by the Charlton Control Officer with, um.
A starting fee at $20.
With, with a starting fee at, at, at $20, with final approval by the Board of Selectmen. But, but we can make it sound better. You get the gist of it.
I, I, I'm just thinking, with the, with the baseline number, um, that might, I'm just thinking, like, once it changes, I, I don't know if that baseline number just becomes moot, because.
Right, are we gonna have to go back to town meeting? Do you just get rid of the $20?
Right, it's just like, you guys set the fee and that's, that's.
Then just set, then just set the fee for $20.
All right, so.
Take away this $20.
Well, it's 20 now.
Basically, say that they have to come to you to approve the fee, and shall be that fee until they come back to you. And whatever, whatever the adjustment is, it's at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen versus it'll just be, because it's kind of like, you have, you're putting that authority in there, but having the $20 in there kind of becomes, like, I want to say, moot a little bit, because you're, you're, you have the ability to change the fee any.
Right, we want just to establish a protective mechanism, so that if there's a desire, we'd love to see fees go down, and we actually did that, right? But if there's a desire from someone to say, I want to raise this fee to $40, they need to come before the board with valid reason, before we go to the contractors and say, hey, we're gonna raise, we're gonna double your fee.
How about procedurally, just kind of thinking through this, and this is what I love about town meeting, like, we, like, like $30 million, like, yeah, that's fine. But like this, I'm like, 20 bucks, I'm like, 100. But, but how about this, I mean, again, I'm just, I'm just starting out an idea, that, that we have something, again, from time to time, by the Charlton Animal Control Officer with approval by the Board of Selectmen, period. But we have the ACO come in at our first meeting, after town meeting, assuming this passes, and we just set the fee right there. Right. Because then we can say whatever we want.
When he has a wicked low fee, if you went to any other shelter, you'd be paying a lot.
Well, I was wondering, was the purpose of this to try to offset the cost of that point, if it's coming to you too late?
Yeah, she was aware she, she had to increase the fee, but at first, at first it was that I had, it was like, well, I have to bump the fee at town meeting, and then it was kind of like, well, I might, anytime that you bump the fee, you'll have to go to town meeting, and maybe you adopt the policy or go to the Board of Selectmen every time that the fee needs to be adjusted versus.
Because I was just thinking like Patsy was, if it was a special animal, he was hired.
If you want to adopt a dog, it's like 300.
Right.
So, so you know, you go to a shelter, you adopt a dog, it's 300.
Yes, so.
But I think if you pass bills the way you wrote that motion, at the very first meeting, she wants to set it to $30, let her set it at $30.
Right, but it's not, as I was telling Andrew just now, it's not so much the 20 as it is the checks and balances.
Right, and then if she wants to raise it over above the 30.
She has to go back to.
And she can do like cats versus dogs, different prices, because that's what normal places do, or goats.
I think the wording, the wording's savage. So the only delta in. So, so the only delta I would recommend is from time to time by the Charlton Animal Officer with approval by the Board of Selectmen, period. And then, knowing procedurally, that we'll ask the ACO in at our first meeting, post-town meeting, to actually set, set that number. Thoughts on that?
Perfect.
Got a motion?
So, move.
Second.
I got Steve.
Yep, yep, all right, Steve, and then Patsy?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, by the way, sorry, I messed that up to start. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose? That is unanimous.
We'll pass on that one, or do we, we should have some input on $20?
All right, now the big news is.
The whole rest of the line is.
Right?
So, yeah, we.
Oh, I'm sorry, did, did you guys vote?
Pass.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
All right, so Articles 16 through 18 are zoning, uh, there's a lot going on here. Sometimes the boards respectively, or sometimes the Board of Selectmen take, take a stand. I mean, just my thoughts on, on the board. I don't have any horse in this race, I'm fine just deferring to the planning board and not making any board recommendation. Obviously, we want to do our own thing on the side, that's fine. I mean, individually on the side, that's cool.
I, I agree, I'd rather lead us to the planning board.
So, any motion to basically, we, actually, no, all right, do we, no, basically, yeah, we, yeah, we just. Yeah, so for all intents and purposes, that's, that's the warrant, with the exception of the one potentially open item, Ashley, you want to?
So I was wondering, do you want to take a vote now, so you don't have to meet again, if you want to support the senior center article or not? I don't have, I'm waiting for bond. Well, right, so basically, so basically, the article will read something along the lines of it's not, there's not, a not-to-exceed cost of $3 million. Would be the way that I ordered it to bond counsel. It was to, for a purchase or renovation.
But I'll, I'll defer, okay, but do we want to give a blanket approval for something we haven't even seen?
I don't think, unless it's in writing, I don't.
Did I bias that question enough? Okay.
I think, at least.
That's what I was just, that's what I was just wondering, because then, when it comes in, we'll have, if it comes in, yeah.
There were any questions, though.
Right.
I think worst-case scenario, we can obviously meet at, at a special meeting prior to town meeting, or we could literally meet right before town meeting.
Correct.
And do it right then and there.
Yeah, it just wouldn't be in the booklet at that point, right.
But we could all, I mean, something tells me that a lot of us are gonna speak one way or another, like, regardless, so.
Yeah, I just didn't know if you cared either way, if you wanted to have another meeting to have it in the booklet, otherwise if we did it, great.
I appreciate you trying to save us some meeting time.
Yeah, Andrew does not do that.
$3 million, no.
Do we have to vote to support it or not support it? Like, do we, I mean, do the boards have to, with the citizen's position, is that?
Uh, citizen's position, we don't have to?
No.
I would strongly recommend that our boards do, because it is such a significant financial asset.
And by duty, he means to take a position.
Yeah, however, that being said, it's obviously up to a majority of the board, one way or another, to either take a position or not, and then what that position may be. So, as Hank said, I, or I'm sorry, whoever it was, like, I think we cross that bridge when we come to it.
I, I think it does need to be in the booklet, just so that people can read it at town meeting, even if we had to do a quick Zoom meeting a couple days ahead, I don't know how long it takes you for the books.
But we don't know if it's gonna come back in. If it did come back in, we could always just print an addendum to hand down when everyone gets into the, when they all come to school.
Yeah.
What, the actual wording of the warrant?
As long as it's met before, once, I mean, the 16.
Well.
We like to print the week before.
Yeah, here, all right, so just from a timeline perspective, we are tentatively said, no later than April 26th, that, that it would be back in for, that we would then close the warrant and put it on. So if they brought it back in and everything was fine, it would absolutely go on the warrant. I think the question is, when does it get printed? And it sounds like the week before.
So as long as we had something by, by like May, because you guys usually meet Wednesday, so as long as we had by May 4th, we'd have a week and a couple days to print, but.
So we could have a Zoom call on the 27th, or we could meet on the 27th, which is a Wednesday, I'm not sure if you guys are meeting. We could just meet right then and there, take a vote, and, and walk out.
This is, yeah, that's.
If, if it happens.
Right, but if it did, though, just as a plan B, couldn't we simply have 200 copies printed as an addendum to hand out when people get to school?
I don't like it.
For one pager.
For one pager. Makes it a more entry good and over the years, you know, having it up. I, I don't like it, I just, I wanted to have it printed if possible. I think that the timeframe allows it, right, because it's a week, 10 days.
It'll be the last article on the, on the warrant anyway. No, we're in say here, but typically, Josh, what's the recommendation of the playing, or what's the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen? What's the recommendation to finance, right? Everyone's gonna hear that anyways.
Right, but if you wanted it in the booklet, yeah, as long as we met by May 4th, we'd have money to print, yeah.
And I, I don't think we care if we make a recommendation from the floor, if it's not in the book, we'll just make it...
Could we just tentatively pencil in for discussion purposes that we'll meet together again on April 27th for maybe literally five minutes? Because I, I, I don't think there's a lot of discussion at that point, at least how respective boards wanna do anything, if at all.
And we could do it, I mean, you could do it Zoom if you want to, because there's still Zoom, right?
Yeah.
Or Zoom.
So, again, I'll, I mean, yeah, so I'll, I'll let the bosses figure out.
I think it needs to be in the booklet. Only because, especially if it looks like we may not be supporting it, I don't, I don't wanna have it appear like...
The goal is to have it printed.
Oh, well, they, they didn't even put it in the booklet for us.
There's been, there's been years we printed the booklets two days before, so...
Which is awful, we don't do that again. We had so many printer issues that year, that was caught off.
We would rather print it two weeks in advance.
But we're also talking at this point, hypotheticals, that, you know, until we actually get it in...
Right, yeah, I'm still waiting for the wording to come out.
Right, but the point is, we're trying to get it in the booklet. The addendum is simply, if we miss that cutoff for whatever reason, we could always utilize that as opposed to not having anything for the people who come to meet. No one's suggesting we don't put it in.
Right.
It's just saying, hey, we have our Plan A, and we have a Plan B, and it's gonna be a cutoff.
Technically, it's gonna be the last page, we can always just swap the last page out, too, so...
I think we have so many options.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
There are reasons why you have deadlines.
Oh, you guys are all...
Just sitting around rip one, can you staple, rip one, you staple.
So are there any other questions on Board of Selectmen on the warrants? Hank and Finance Committee, thank you for inviting us in, sorry about my mess up on the ACO article. So I'll let you guys get back to business, you have, can I get a motion to adjourn for a moment, David?
Summer.
For a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, that is unanimous. We are officially adjourned on our side.
Motion to adjourn, so move. Motion and a second. All those in favor to say yes, opposed say no, and it's unanimous.
Well done, everybody. Nice job.